Now, this is for the property maintenance. Do we have anything on each property?
So, this is about the property maintenance ordinance.
Do we have any notes or anything on it?
I've made some notes, yeah.
But we don't have anything.
Um, I believe this was passed around a couple of meetings ago as part of the package. The property maintenance ordinance.
I was gonna make copy. There's a chicken on the table.
We are very animal friendly here.
I know.
Isn't that funny?
I just wanted to make it funny.
Thank you for noticing, Katie.
Why don't you start with how we got to this process, Bob?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
How did we get to this process?
Oh, how did we get to the process? There have been concerns expressed by people in town because there are abandoned, uncared for, unmaintained properties in various places. And they impact the value of the people living next to them. So, the thought was that we could review, well, this property maintenance ordinance never passed, the one we, the one we're looking at.
Right, that's from 2012.
It came forward, was it 2012?
Yeah.
Never passed. And some people feel it may have simply been because the language wasn't, didn't convey the proper meaning of the intent of the board. So, what we're doing is going back to that ordinance and looking at it to see whether or not we can make it more user friendly while still achieving the goal of ensuring that neighbors' properties aren't, property values aren't impacted negatively by their neighbors. So, I think that's, that's one of the goals of this. And that's why we're talking about it tonight. The idea of the originally drafted ordinance which didn't pass was to set a minimum standard for maintenance of the grounds of property. And this says grounds of property. I think we may want to broaden that. In order to protect health, public safety, and to prevent nuisance conditions. And those terms, nuisance conditions, is a defined term in the, in the ordinance. Yeah, would be a defined term.
Merci.
Should we put the chicken in clint's seat? In front of Clint's? In front of Clint's? It's so apropos.
Was not me, that was not.
I'll, I'll tell him.
Okay. So, we talked about the fact that this was at one time put before the board and termed down back in 2012. So, we're revisiting it with the idea of putting up something that is more easily understood in terms of what our intent would be as the board, because we're, we're the ultimate enforcers of this. The code enforcement officer is the first enforcer, but if it comes down to it, it goes in, gets thrown into the hands of the board, the select board. So, how would you like to proceed with this?
I had one question on this. It says the ordinance is enacted pursuant to state law, da, 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 da. Where are you, first of all? I'm on section two authority. Okay. Did somebody look up to see what the state law is?
Yep.
Okay, that would be good to know.
It's ordinance power. In other words, the state law gives the town-
The right to-
The right to have this ordinance.
Having ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all?
Yes, basically, yeah.
Okay, my understanding was that this was not, that this, these were homes that were occupied, not just unoccupied.
The language says otherwise.
Well, it talks about the and/or occupant.
It defines, let's see, it defines occupant, operator, and owner. And owner is defined as a person who jointly or separately has legal or equitable title to any property. And shall have, or has control of any dwelling unit as the owner or agent.
Where do you, where do you see the language as saying that it's, that you think it's for just unoccupied homes?
I think it's implied by the definition of owner in section nine, sorry, section ten definitions.
I, I don't see that there. I just see that it's the owner's responsibility. But then there's occupant. I know when we discussed this before, it, it wasn't necessarily unoccupied places. Even ordinance are unoccupied.
How we follow the state law.
That's we have to-
Well, that's dangerous buildings. That's different than property maintenance.
Yeah, okay, right, right. I know when we discussed this before, it, it did have to do with occupied. And that's what a lot of the complaints are about. Not necessarily only unoccupied, but occupied. Because it does, it does say occupant.
Yeah, but it also refers to operator and owner.
Right, so some homes are occupied by the owners and some are occupied by renters. So-
But it doesn't say, it says this ordinance shall apply to the following property, one and two family, multifamily residential dwellings. Whether occupied or not, doesn't say.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying. So, I didn't think when you introduced it, it sounded to me like you were talking about only unoccupied.
No.
I think it has to do with both.
I think it has to do with both.
Okay.
I think we agree on that.
Yeah, that, okay, thanks for clarifying that.
One thing it doesn't do is deal with commercial property. And I'm wondering if that should be included as well.
So, can I ask the question?
Yes, please.
If it didn't pass the first time, what makes you think it's going to pass this time?
It's seven years later. Town is, towns change. I would say they move forward or backwards.
But what was the issue the first time it didn't pass?
I don't know. Do you remember, Jen?
I think a lot of it was the language and don't tell me how to keep my yard. I think that was basically-
Part of it was Bruce Nichols as well, because people were complaining about his artwork, which they thought it was junk. And he come in, and I was right here, I remember, he come in and spoke against it because people thought his stuff was junk. It wasn't, it was artwork.
Yeah.
And they considered it junk and they wanted something done about it.
Yeah.
And that's the same way, I'll say it all over again, you know, some people's trash, maybe some people's treasure.
That's true.
Well, that, that's true. And that's why it should be written so that that's-
Yeah, so they should be protected.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
So, I mean, I think that's what we have to-
We don't want to be really-
I don't think so. I, I, the, the dangerous buildings, the abandoned buildings, absolutely. But other things, maybe you might be want a little careful if you want it to pass.
You do have to be careful.
You do, you do have to be careful.
Yeah, if you want it to pass, you're gonna have to be careful.
And, and from our perspective, because I talked to, you know, we know what we get complaints about. And I'll be honest with you. It's always a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. It's not people just driving by and saying, "That's an eyesore." It's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue most of the time. And it has more to do with, if it's, if it's true garbage, we have the ability to enforce it through the health code. But some of it is, you know, a majority of it is boats, vehicles, and things like that, that, and, and I don't know how you regulate in a seafaring town how many boats one can have. And whether a boat hasn't moved in 10 years, doesn't mean that it's not going to.
I didn't see the word boat anywhere in this ordinance.
But, but I'm just letting you know.
It said vehicles and stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm just letting you know that that's what most of the complaints-
Really?
So, one section of town in, I'm gonna say June, gets the most complaints because people suddenly, I guess when they bought the house, didn't realize what they drove through.
Well.
To get there. So, then they're shocked when they come for the summer and see things that might not be seen in other places.
Yeah.
So, I, I think you have to be very careful because these are people's livelihoods. It may not be working now, but it might be working in the future. That's just-
I've never thought of boats as being anything that-
But that's a majority of the complaints that we get are boats, vehicles, neighbor-to-neighbor about trash. Some people that collect their recycling to take it to the redemption centers.
I always thought a vehicle, if it is not registered, you had to dispose of it.
I think it's one or, you can't have a-
A certain number.
A certain number.
One or two vehicles in your yard that isn't registered.
No, I had one in my yard and I had to get rid of it.
Who told you that?
Daryl. There are some rules about that. I know there was one place that- If it's not registered, not on the road, you have to get rid of it.
I don't think so. Do you remember, John?
John's smiling.
It goes here, and I talked to Max once about just-
I'm saying that.
Stuff.
So, we do have junkyards. And now I'm supposed to have so many vehicles and I'm supposed to be fenced in.
Yeah, and what constitutes a junkyard, we think we have that written in the text. Yep.
The other side of the coin is that, and I'm just to take the devil's advocate-
I, you can, yeah, I understand.
There are two sides to this. And I, I don't know if there's a middle road or not.
There's not going to be, because I'll tell you what's gonna happen. And this is the, this is because we're gonna have to have our code enforcement enforce it. You can't legislate good behavior. And that's what we're gonna try to do. It's, it's, we're getting down, we're going down that same slippery slope that we have with firework ordinance. You're, you're trying to legislate good behavior to someone else's taste. And that's a very slippery slope. And, and it, it sounds easy. Okay, we want these cars removed, or we want this boat taken away, or we want this abandoned trailer that, you know, was a house at one point, and now you put another one on there and that's the house. It all costs money, and if people don't have money to remove it, how do they remove it? I mean, and that's, that's what I'm afraid of is, so then we're taking, you know, how do you, how, how do you do that? In a thoughtful way?
I don't have an answer.
You know, if, if you come, I, I, that's, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, I think, I think Stan does a, a good job of trying to help people along the way to get it done. But, you know, there's a way to do it and there's a way not to do it. And I just have a little bit of concern about the judgment call that we're, so, so what, what is our goal? Is it the vehicles? You know, somebody's grass, if it gets too, I mean, we're not regulating that exactly, but how do you?
Well, it's to protect health, public health, which I think is important. To protect public safety. If you've got old abandoned vehicles and there are kids around you, there's a concern there. Just like leaving a refrigerator with its door on in your backyard so they can crawl in there and get locked in and suffocate. And that used to be one of the great fears where I, where I grew up.
Yeah, it was.
And it, it happened.
Yeah, you have to, I think yours are parts.
Yes, your refrigerators.
I remember refrigerators.
You have to take the door off.
Yeah.
All I can say is that I remember a really cool 51 student biker in my grandfather's backyard that I loved to sit in and pretend I was going places and that I was, you know, a country music singer and I was hearing myself on the radio and-
I can buy into that. We have some knowledge.
I know. See, and that's the thing, how do you-
For 19 years.
How do you regulate and how do you, how do you legislate good behavior?
Well, you can't.
I know.
But, but there are places, I know there was a place once that had so many cars and things, it was almost scary. And I counted, and they were old machinery things and cars, and you couldn't see the house for all of that. And it was pretty scary looking. It was, but it was not a place that I'd want to walk by or buy property there in that town.
And I, I get that.
You know, I mean, and that was excess. I, you know, cars, bicycles. You know, there are places, there are towns where you can't leave a bicycle outside.
And there are, but there are people in this town who scrap and they're going to stockpile until the price comes up, and, and that may be their only source of income.
Yeah.
Well, we can put fence around it.
We do have some rules about vehicles.
Put a fence around it, so it can't be seen. But under section four, maintenance standards, it's already written here.
I, I know it is, but I'm just saying that, I'm just pointing out the issues we're gonna have. I just want everybody to be-
Garbage is a problem, and we've had that because that brings in fire, and the-
Right, and that, that we deal with through Richard, who's the public health officer.
Yeah. And the fire department has come in and cleaned up some of that stuff.
And John has too.
Yeah, yeah.
You picked a good meeting to come to.
Yeah, you know, I deal with this a lot, because we're at the transfer station, but also working on the roads. And Julie's right. These people don't have the means to pay. We turned around and we were working right there, and some of the stuff was in the right of way. People couldn't afford to get rid of it. But while it was the right way, we took care of it. And it was funny, the people that lived further down the road were all happy about it. But nobody seems to want to talk to these people. And I don't know why, you know. I could tell you for a fact, if one of my highway trucks breaks down on that road, then people will come out and help.
Oh.
They break down on the other end of town, the people could buy into that and give my guys help because they broke down on it.
I wasn't referring to that section of town. It was another section, the other end.
Well, but I think that's what's gonna, that's my fear, is the targeting of sections of town. I, I mean, and that's, that's a concern, and I think we have to be-
Why don't we take it to the people then of that special part of the town and see what they have to say about it?
Because they're proud people.
Pardon me?
They're proud people.
Well, we can still take it to them and say, how do you want us, how do you like to, how would you like us to approach this? I mean, it's right here in the ordinance.
But this isn't, this is not a pass ordinance.
As I say.
Yeah.
It's already in the ordinance. How would you like us to help you with this? Extend a, a humility, humanitarian, whatever you want to call it.
I think if you approach a cert, then I think you're telling people how to live. And I don't, I, I, it's, this is a tough, it's, I, I just want you to understand the toughness of this. It's not just, I, I think if you put it out in its current form, you're gonna have the same result you had in 2012.
Well, it can't go in its current form. I mean, that goes without saying.
But you have to have-
Do we want to spend a bloody pleasure, try to put it into a form that legal people will work for, and then try to enforce it?
I think we have rules about number of vehicles in a yard.
You do. And after so many vehicles, you gotta be a junk-
Then you have to be a junkyard, right. And then-
So, that shouldn't even be in there, you know?
Right, yeah, that shouldn't, right.
You're reinventing the wheel on some stuff.
But that, we, so you don't need to put anything like that in here because we already have that.
You already have ordinances on your trash. You already have that. You have that through the code, you have it through the transfer station.
What do you, well, what do you want to accomplish?
I, I don't know. I, I shouldn't say nothing.
Yes, you should.
But, I mean, what are you after?
Right.
You have all kinds of rules and regulations now. And if we're not doing anything with rules and regulations now, what's gonna happen with that?
Yeah.
You know, if you want to turn around about abandoned building, that's the fire chief's call. He can turn around and, you know, deal with that. But how come we keep adding onto it? And how about, you know, we try to work with people? And I think you'll find they will work with you if you push them.
Max sent a letter, I think, to the car place, and I've noticed that about six or seven of those cars are gone.
We, we, it's, it's difficult.
The argument is we have the tools in place, we're just not using them perhaps as much as we need to, if we need to use them at all.
This was on the goal list, so-
It was.
I don't know, I, I, this predates me, so I'm not sure how, you know, what the impetus in 2012, what it was.
I don't remember who brought it out. I think John Spear was-
Yeah, John was here.
Was, but somebody brought it to him. I think it was a community. It was somebody in the community.
It's like I said, it was about Bruce Nichols.
Was it?
His, his stuff down there.
Not only him.
Huh?
He wasn't just him.
But he was, his, his area was brought out. And I distinctly remember that.
I mean, we saw some of it when we took care of that problem down on Backhoe Road.
Right, but that, that was-
That's an abandoned-
Abandoned-
That's an abandoned building.
Buildings, that's a totally different and costly-
Yeah.
Way to go. But what I think, if you have specific addresses that concern you, if you come to us and tell us, we can address them on an individual basis.
I'm wondering whether or not we ought to redirect this to buildings that are abandoned or have not been lived in for, and obviously aren't being maintained.
There's one right downtown. It's hard to walk by with the stuff growing out at you.
Well, and, and that, that we are addressing through the abandoned, essentially abandoned buildings, so that's a, that's a good example.
That's a state, that's a state, basically, a state standard.
But there, there is one, that the building is fine, it's just not maintained as far as the, the shrubbery has grown off, grown onto the sidewalk, and it's, I thought I was gonna talk to the real estate person just to say, "If you'd like to sell this, here's a hint," you know? Weed whack and spruce up a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, because it's a, it's a, was a lovely old building, but when it's abandoned, it falls.
I don't think that's the one that's for sale. It's the one next door.
Or maybe it's for rent. Right next to caption. That building is-
Oh, that is for sale, yes.
If it's not for sale, it's for rent. Yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's got lash, lashes on there. But, I mean, for, as a real estate person, if I wanted to sell that, I'd-
Have you had any complaints other than?
We get complaints, neighbor-to-neighbor complaints. I, I honestly-
But what are they complaining about?
Like I said, either vehicles, boats, the grass is too tall, I mow my grass, there's mosquitoes in their grass. I, I mean, we're, we've never enforced the height of grass.
I didn't know that.
And I'm not going to start.
Do we have, is there an appropriate height?
I guess maybe, from whence people came, there's an appropriate height. I can't, you know, um, I can't do much about that, you know? And when we do get garbage complaints, we do send people out. And I, I have to say, my staff is excellent. You know, Stan works with people, Richard works with people, Daryl works with people. I don't want to have the stigma of what they're going, the pains they're going through in Damascada of, you know, a gentrification, or we're going to regulate what people are painting their shutters, because that's when people hear maintenance ordinance, that's the other thing, that that's what they think you're gonna regulate, what color to paint my house, when you need to do this, and, and we, we have to be careful with that. But if you guys have specific things, I don't know from when, like I said, this was on the goal list and it predated me. If you have specific concerns, like you said, a certain number of cars come a junkyard, then they need to put up a, a fence.
What about fences themselves?
They can be an eyesore too, because I've seen fences that were made out of pallets. And do you put the fence with the good side out or the good side in?
That's like the curler paper roll.
You know? You know, one man's pallet might be ugly to another person who thinks it's amazing.
That's true.
I saw a birch fence recently, and it was amazing.
Yeah, well, there's amazing looking fences.
Made out of birch trees, it was pretty.
It's when they fall down or rot or fall over that they begin to look tacky.
But you know, where a town, the town, one of the towns I worked in, we outlawed plastic fence because it was ugly, but it would last forever. You know? So, and the hate of fence, I mean, those are things, but I mean, if you really want to, again, regulating behavior is very difficult. And what, like you said, Abden, one man's junk is another man's treasure.
I thought it was Nate. Did I call him the wrong name the other time? Nichols. It's hard.
Yeah, was it Bruce, was it Bruce, wasn't it? Was it Bruce?
Was that?
I thought it was Nate.
Nick, maybe it is.
Nate.
It wasn't, no, I was thinking Bruce or something.
His son.
Maybe his son is Bruce.
Yeah, could have been.
Well, there you go. Family.
I'm just saying, let's be careful with this and think about it. And maybe what you should do is, if you can point out specific issues that you've noticed or had people come to you about, then if I can figure those out, I can sit down with Stan and Daryl, and then we can say, "Okay, what were these issues?" And maybe we could address it in something better. You know, John, Daryl, myself, and Stan can come up with our list too, and maybe we can, and yours, and figure that out.
Yeah, I'm beginning to think back, this may have come up as a result of somebody living down, who's left towns since then. They've moved to another community.
Do we have any more free pickup garbage day or something like that?
No.
Why?
Costs too much.
Costs too much.
I pick up mine for free. No, I mean- Take it to the village. For certain parts of the town. Maybe we could reintroduce that somehow.
No.
Well, and, and I, but again, you're then telling somebody how to live. And I think that's a slippery slope.
Well, there's a point here, though.
Yeah, it's true.
If you're making it, if you're making an accommodation available to those-
Yes.
And they take advantage of it. It's an indication to me that they'd rather live another way, because they're willing to clean up.
Yeah.
If they can do it for free, they're willing to do it.
Maybe they don't have the availability to take that trash to the dump. Or if you, you know, have a, a garbage day one time, and then another time have tires, everybody puts their tires out and you pick it-
Ooh, Johnny!
Pick it, just, just hand me out. You know, the availability, maybe they just don't have the availability to take them to the dump.
John, you better come to my turn.
You know, we done that for seven years. Seven years, thousands and thousands ago, and we kept doing it. First time Monday I done that, told them we'd leave my truck there. So, we parked truck in the field. We couldn't even get at the truck Monday morning. I had to bring in heavy equipment and other dump trucks to get at the truck. They threw everything around it.
Why did they do that?
Because the probably dump truck was full?
Because they couldn't lift it.
No, they had one piece of metal on the dump truck. So, second year, we thought we'd be smiling, we added the community in, and we're gonna go down Florida, they have the stuff there, and they're gonna help us. Load the stuff in, yeah. Well, Junior Willie was working back in, old junior. He says, "This is odd. All these guys are coming off from here, leaving." He says, "It's your only way in." I didn't pay any attention to it. Yeah, everybody left. They went in and picked it up. Then it was free, they could take it to the dump. Everybody and their brother did. All right, we, I, I can't remember, $60,000 that night. All right, we, I, I can't remember, sixty thousand dollars that night, and that cost them town. It wasn't cheap. And it documented it, someone told you, you know, it was cheap. But you know. Last few years, just working with the people, they cleaned up more than it did in seven years that we're doing free dump.
And how did you do that?
You talked to people.
Communication.
Communication. Bring.
You don't belittle them, you don't.
Nope, nope.
And if they don't.
Be humanitarian.
Yeah.
Open up the door.
If you turn around to the farm, they're gonna inspect it all the time. I don't, we don't do it.
No. You gotta, you gotta do the first step. You gotta take that first step.
Yeah, and let's talk to them.
I like what John's saying.
I do too.
Makes sense to me. Anything more to add to this workshop? Shall we take this one off of Julie's list for a while?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who has a burning desire for this. I think there was a person a few years ago. Who?
Been so long, I don't remember.
Wanted something.
All right, so.
One more down.
One more down.
Thirty-four to go.
So I guess I can call the meeting to order.
Yes.
Select board, or stand for the pledge.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a public hearing? A liquor license, special amusement permit for Sammy's Family Entertainment Center. Looks like Allplay is now being renamed. The only question I have is they're looking for class three, they've, they've indicated class three and class four separately. If there is a, an option just below that that says class three and four. It's the same price. And I have no idea why the state just decided that that's something they want to have as a separate classification.
One piece of paper maybe instead of two.
Maybe.
But. Six, one half a dozen, the other half.
Yeah.
Maybe they want two pieces of paper for their money.
Did we, we don't have anything from the police, 'cause this has never been, this is a new one.
They've had, oh, what?
Allplay would've had recommendations from the police about these books.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, these, they don't, they, there's no history to them.
There's no history.
That's Sammy Spear, who is related to the Spear Farms. It's Ron, both Ron Spears. Where she grew up in Nobego.
Yeah.
What, did they buy the, uh, the bowling alley?
I think so. She's been managing it for quite a while.
Huh.
It doesn't look to me like they've actually closed the deal, 'cause it indicates the mortgage is being applied for. Do we want to pen this until after they've actually bought it, or are they looking for an indication of how we would regard this if they do go ahead and buy it?
Well, is the, is it up for renewal? Is their liquor license up for renewal?
I'm not sure it passes with the sale. I would pick the new one.
Their start, it's, it's starting August thirty-first, so you're approving it now. And there was concern that if you didn't have the second August meeting for some reason. They might not have it in time for, for renewal license.
So we could, we could approve it subject to closing the, closing the sale.
Right, sure. It would go with the person, not the property.
Not the property. Well, the diagram looks accurate. Is there a motion or any more?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comment? All in favor? Done. Sorry, I didn't open the public hearing and close the public hearing, that's really.
Sorry.
I didn't go by the book on that, and I apologize.
Were there any public comments?
We can go back and do it again if you wish, and I can go by the book.
Sure.
All right, so, I opened the public hearing. We've had comments, public comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing. So act on the liquor license, and the motion was to approve it subject to close of the sale.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor. Thank you.
It's like deja vu.
Sorry?
Like deja vu.
Yeah. No presentations. Adjustments to the agenda, uh, there are a couple. Does anybody else have? I've got a couple myself. Does anybody else have a? Uh, one is to, um, add another member to the land use committee, someone from Waldeboro.
And a new business.
Katie and I interviewed her yesterday. And the second one is for John to discuss the purchase of four new trucks for his department, for Public Works. And we could add. It would both be under new business. I suggest eleven point three and eleven point four respectively. So eleven point three would be the new appointment to the land use committee, and eleven point four would be to discuss the four new trucks for the Department of Public Works. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? Any further adjustments? All in favor? Okay. Citizen comments? Any citizen comments? We welcome them. Okay?
Can I have Clint?
Select board comments?
We'll put Clint back.
I would just like to say that, uh, the farmers market is doing very well, number one. We've been there every Saturday. The hours have changed now from nine to twelve, it is now ten to one, okay? Um, and, uh, it's been going very well. We've been getting new people in, new vendors in with their produce and stuff, and I just wanna say, uh, kudos to the farmers market. And also, uh, I hope you all have noticed the difference around town with the many flowers and the cleanups and everything. We're doing a, a, a big job on that, and, uh, we're, um, heading in the right direction, getting a lot of people involved. And a lot of comments coming in from the, um.
There are a lot of positive comments.
Garden Club, yep. So.
Thank you to the Garden Club, Katie.
Yes.
They're doing a great job.
They are doing.
You're doing a great job.
The only thing is, I can't get out there at six o'clock in the morning. Just, I get, just can't do it. So I have to get out there when I can, so.
That was a good idea, the, if you have twenty minutes, go down to the landing and pull some weeds around the edges.
Yep, yep.
Not the colorful ones, though, right?
Not the colorful ones, no, just the green ones.
That's my problem. If I pull, I'd probably pull out what I.
Everything goes.
Grass. Not in pots or big barrels. So thank you to everyone to, that is helping out.
Any other, what do you?
I, I had something. I had the opportunity to go to the Coastal Caucus on Climate Issues that had to do with the coast of Maine specifically. It was, uh, it was a very nice, they were a panel, it's a panel of four people. One was a legislator from southern Maine coastal town. Bloom is her last name. And then there was a person from the Island Institute, Seth Berry, from Legislature. And the fellow who is, I think is in charge of Maine Conservation Voters. That's a committee, I guess. Anyway, they were very knowledgeable, it was interesting, it was a, uh, the audience was really good audience. I had to leave early because I had another commitment, but I was there for quite a while, and what I pick, I was just gonna mention the things I picked up from that, because that affects us as a town. And they mentioned what affects coastal Maine, affects all of Maine, so it's important that everybody, uh, is part of this. One of the things that the, uh, one of the guys mentioned was, uh, infrastructure and how we really need to be looking at infrastructure when we're planning. Because of the sea rise, and looking ahead to see how long, and there have been some incidences where they forgot, and. There might, that may have to be redone, so. They were saying, do it right the first time, and, but to, to keep that in mind as, um, one of the factors when we're doing that. One, another thing was that to take net metering to the next level, and that Maine is back in the forefront of solar. And, uh, the new bill has opened things up, and there's a lot of activity going on, and anyway, it's, uh, Maine is at the forefront back again. There's a science and advisory bill that's based on ocean acidification, so there's a lot of work going on with that. They were saying they were pleased to be bringing science back into the policymaking. So Bill Coastal Hazard and Risk Bill was something they talked a lot about. It's interesting, I'm gonna look into that. And the other thing, Bob, I think you're gonna like this. They said that one thing to address, uh, prioritize in dealing with any kind of climate change is high-speed reliable internet.
Oh, yeah.
And they, they said that that was important, and then he said, and why do you ask? And then he went on to a few things. That keeps people, keeps the, the cars at home. But he said that's, that's a major, that's something major, and that's something that we are working on and have been. Another thing they mentioned was that we need to get level-two charging stations, and they need to be put in before they're needed, to have them ready, so that when they're needed, they're there. We talked about that once, and I was in California this summer. They were everywhere, and there were cars charging everywhere. It was a little bit sci-fi to me, but, you know, we're here in Maine, and we're insulated a little bit. But going out into other states, we see some of these cars that do need to be plugged in, and they talked about the specific types of plugs. It's, it's above my pay grade, so, um. But there, but it was interesting to say that Maine really does need to step up, and I know we have discussed that before. So I thought of you, Bob, when they were talking about that.
Thank you.
I did. Um, anyway, it was really interesting. I hope they have more of those, and it gave me some, um, some things to look into. They did talk about efficiency Maine Trust is helping schools get solar, that's, that's all the schools around Maine. They did talk something about wind, and I didn't get all of that information, but it was certainly worthwhile, and, um, I'll be looking some of that stuff up, so.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Anybody else? Okay. Town manager's report.
Uh, we have started the initial inventory of the streetlights, and there are some discrepancies in the location. And a number of lights, so we're working on that. Um, we got a risk management dividend back because of our good loss experience, and we earned a rebate of forty-four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, Healthy Kids, Lincoln Healthy Kids, their mobile food truck, um, is in Waldeboro at four different locations now. Um, going to four different locations, um, three times a week. And actually taking the lunch to where the kids are. And if you're nineteen and under, it's free, and if you're nineteen, uh, if you're over nineteen, it's a two-dollar charge for the lunch. I had a very nice meeting with representatives of Angus King's, um, office, um, and they are going to, um, help us with some funding issues. I wanted to also let you know that we made it to the last round for the fire truck grant. Kinda cool.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of a big deal.
How much is, how much is that grant?
We applied for five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand, yeah. Boy, that'd be huge.
So if everybody could say a little prayer, it would be a good thing. Um, and this is really exciting, and I'm, I'm excited about this, but we have a race car driver in our presence, so.
Not yet.
Well, almost. Um, so somebody thinks they're Rusty Wallace, Abden does, and he's going to be racing in an Enduro. And why that's important to Waldeboro is he has graciously, graciously agreed, um, to run laps and have on the hood of his race car the Waldeboro, the Waldo Theater. So he will be fundraising for the Waldo, so it's a hundred lap race at the Wiscasset Speedway on October twenty-fourth, and.
August, October?
Uh, October. August twenty-fourth.
That could be there if it were October twenty-fourth.
No, August twenty-fourth. So, um, the theater's putting out these pledge sheets, and it really should, I can send you a picture of him with his race car. So if you would like to pledge, and this is like a big deal, because you can pledge per lap or just make a one-time donation, but. If you haven't been to the Wiscasset Speedway, there is no more fun than you can have on a Friday night for five dollars than going to the Wiscasset Speedway and watching the races. It's, and the food is excellent. Uh, you know, I mean, it's for a family, or it's just a lot of fun, but I thought this was a really unique way, and, um. As somebody who holds the Waldo near and dear to their heart, I, I thought it was very gracious of you to, to volunteer, um, to do this, and, um, it should be a good time.
Thank you, Abden.
And just to show up and just, you know, show your support.
Yeah.
What time?
Six o'clock is when racing starts right out.
On the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Six P M.
Saturday night.
Wiscasset Speedway.
Yes, and I will send the appropriate pictures to the newspaper, but if we can get a lot of people from Waldehood just there cheering them on.
And it's like everybody goes to this thing.
A lot of people go to them, a lot of people go to them, but it's, if you haven't been, you have to go. You cannot have more fun on a Saturday night. Go to the race afterwards, you're all hepped up, you go home, it's all the good.
Good in the neighborhood.
I'm excited.
I do have a question to ask you.
Yeah.
About MMA insurance.
Yes.
Because they are the people we buy our insurance from.
Yes.
And this came up during a discussion with John this afternoon, and I think it's a pen important thing to, to talk about, at least discuss it. With the exception of the fire trucks, we don't really insure for replacement value. Yes, that's my understanding, anyway. Is that, is that your understanding as well?
There's been a lot of discussion about that, back and forth.
Yeah. I don't know what the cost increment is, whether it would cost us a lot, but it seems to me, based on what I saw today and what I heard. That town vehicles, number one, they're expensive, number two, they're driven hard. They're, they're constantly in service, and they're out there all times of the year, and the opportunities for mishaps is probably on a percentage-wise basis higher in this environment than it would be out in the public. And I'm just wondering if that's something we shouldn't look at and discuss at our.
Well, I, I.
In our budget committee.
John brought that up to me, and, again, John's operating on something that happened to him a while back.
Yeah.
So when I asked the question, they're like, well, we give you, not, we give you the value at the time.
Right.
Right.
So if it's an eighty thousand dollar truck and they gave you twenty.
Right, I don't know if we can buy up.
Okay. And whether it's worth it or not, I don't know what, I don't know.
It might not be, but at the same token, it's a good argument for trading in your vehicles when you really should and not letting them become.
Ten years old instead of eight.
Well, I was thinking more like twenty.
Twenty.
Instead of. You know, 'cause we're losing the value either as replacement or when we go to sell them to buy a new one, so, you know. But I, uh, we can definitely talk about that, but yeah, that was brought up, um, I know there was a, you, you, you could do that where I came from, but I, I don't think. I, I thought Peg researched that, and I, I don't think we can buy up, but we can, I can confirm that.
Can I just add an addendum to the, uh, select board comment?
Sure.
I wanna thank John for all the mulch and loam that he has been dropping off out back here for the Garden Club to use wherever we need it. So thank you. We already went through one great big pile of it, now we're on our second, uh, big pile of mulch especially, to do the islands especially.
No, they don't look so weedy at all. They look good.
Yes, so thank you, John.
And none of them caught on fire this year.
None of them did, huh?
No. It was a good thing.
None of them what?
Caught on fire. Last year, we had one of the intersections catch on fire, so they used cardboard underneath the mulch.
Yeah.
Oh.
No. Keeps down the weeds.
They're doing good.
But it also is combustible.
I could have a look at that mulch again. Thank you for the tip. Okay, um, anything else anybody'd like to bring up at this point? Consent calendar, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there any things we wanted?
I have correspondence.
Yeah.
Here. Three of them. Thank you notes. This is from Maria Enemirati. This is from Maria Enemirati. Dear George C. Genthner Scholarship Committee, I can't thank you enough for offering me a scholarship towards my graduate degree at the New England College of Optometry. I am incredibly grateful for you, my home community, for your continued support of my education over the years. I look forward to earning my doctorate degree so I can return to the mid-coast and help those of you who have helped me along the way. Sincerely, Maria Enemirati. Ashley Holmes, dear George G. Genthner Scholarship, I'm writing to express my sincere gratitude to you for making the George G. Genthner Scholarship possible. I was thrilled to learn of my selection for this honor and am deeply appreciative of your support. In the fall, I will begin my undergraduate career as a freshman at the University of Maine-Orinno where I will be studying nursing. I am currently employed at Moody's Diner where I just began waitressing after three years of hard work cashiering and dishwashing. I also volunteer at Pope Memorial Humane Society where I read and talk to cats to open them up to human interaction. I cannot express my gratitude enough and I want you to know that your generous support will help me achieve my dreams. Sincerely, Ashley Holmes.
I wanna go read to cats.
You can, you can volunteer to do that. You can read to Ashley, she's fun. Dear Scholarship Committee, thank you so much for choosing me to receive the Fannie Gray Scholarship in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. It will be a big help to some of my college expenses. Thank you, Kelsey Berry. It's nice to have those young people writing thank you notes.
It is.
Handwritten thank you notes.
Putting in the mail, see?
Yeah, they didn't send an email, they wrote them out by hand.
Yep.
That's nice.
And we appreciate that, I do.
New business, oh, sorry, we need to vote on the consent calendar. Is there any more comments or, okay, all in favor? New business. We have a proposed new appointment to the marijuana committee. And because that committee was put into limbo for a bit, they completed their initial task. The suggestion is to re-resurrect that committee. And I believe the members would be Freeman Saussner, Jane Pine, Amanda Tabernakas, Ted Worcester, and the new nominee would be Renee Grover if we approve her to join the committee. Heidi and I interviewed Renee last week. Boy, she knows her stuff and she would be a good addition to help round out that committee. So I guess I'd entertain a motion to put Renee Grover on the marijuana committee and to reconfirm the four other folks who would like to be on it and continue with it. Is there a motion?
Promoved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Just a note. Ted would need to be picked up at home and brought over to make it easier for him to get around. So all in favor? And eleven-two is to appoint assessor's agent and register our voters for fiscal year 2020.
Well, it's just to let you know they've been appointed.
Oh, okay.
You don't appoint.
So we don't need to do anything.
Right, we went through this.
Thank you. Eleven-three, we're moving on right along here, would be an appointment to the land use committee. We interviewed Aubrey Heller yesterday. She's the president of the library, board of trustees. Very interesting woman who's got, who grew up in Waldeboro, went to school here, left and came back with her husband and children. They've got a farm up on two-twenty. And she has some interesting ideas about land use and ordinance revision. So I think she's a strong addition to the committee. Is there a nomination or a motion, sorry?
So I just wanna mention that she's, it's nice to have young folks.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, Aubrey's on the committee. John? We're gonna talk about trucks.
Trucks are rough.
I'm sorry for running my mouth at your workshop.
No, you're not.
All right, these trucks are all due, we had a ten-year cycle on them. We've got four of them that are due, starting with the Wheeler.
That's this one here.
And that's.
The green one that was parked outside, I can pass that around if you want to. That's the one we're replacing.
This is a Wheeler.
I went around and got a couple quotes. There should be some I folded too. One from Daigle and Holton.
He's showing you the one that.
These are the new ones.
These are the new ones, he's showing you the old ones, he's showing them the old ones.
Oh, sure, yeah. That's the one, we're gonna get rid of.
You can guess those are all very pretty.
Are these all the same?
No, they're all different.
The Wheeler, Bob, didn't understand what it was and I thought about it, how to get him to understand that. So Wheeler has a thirteen-yard, thirteen-cubic yard body, liquid. It's sixteen yards riser. All right, it's one of the biggest trucks that we have. This time when I went and looked at these trucks, I went to dealership. Usually I spec everything out separate. This time I really didn't have the time to do that, so I went to dealership. And there's different ones. International had a few of the trucks that are all put together with the headgear, plow and sander that we use. But the trucks differ. We have one priced from Daigle and Holton, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty cents.
And we just have to point out, Daigle and Holton is no relation whatsoever to John.
No, I tried that, didn't work. And Morrison Sylvester, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. These trucks, back years ago, we figured it's gonna be around two hundred thousand. So the price come in cheaper than I thought, but there is a big difference in the trucks. The one at Daigle and Holton has a three-thirty, a three-fifty horse motor. It has a three thousand I D S automatic transmission, which is the same size of what we're putting in our smaller trucks. I got talking to the salesman and he says most cities and towns, that's what they're running. Because they're just doing maintenance, we do more than maintenance. So Morrison Sylvester, the difference in that truck, it's got twenty thousand pounds front end, forty-six thousand pounds rear end in it, suspension, four-seventy-five horsepower and a forty-five hundred I D S transmission, which is, is great for us, it's what we need. And they asked for a low bid at a hundred, low quote, excuse me, at a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Sir, you're getting more truck for less money?
Yes, yep. So that's that one. Next one, six-wheel trucks.
Sorry, John, what was the price on that Morrison?
A hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Thanks.
Next one, Daigle and Holton again, six-yard truck. And we call them six-yard truck because they're five-yard liquid and run around seven, eight yards riser. Daigle and Holton and specs and the equipment, the plow equipment, everything's the same that we already use. Head command at a hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and nine fifty-eight. It has the three hundred and thirty horsepower Cummins motor in it. It has the twenty-three rears, the eighteen fronts. And the type of snowplow equipment we use, same company. And getting another one, looking at it, another six-wheeler, Whited Ford Peterbilt. Turned around and they had one there and I stopped to look at it. It's a different plow company, it's rigged it up. The stuff's a little bit lighter. It's got a three hundred horse Cummins in it. And the frames, I spec out a hundred and twenty thousand pounds per square inch frame. That reason is we don't bend frames or twist them if we go off the road. And single plate of frames. But they come in at a hundred and sixty-one thousand, which is cheaper. You know, I do have, you know, it's quite a truck, I looked at it, it's quite a truck. You know, it has everything on it, top and all the bells and whistles. And they're trying to get one out there. The only thing is it has different manufacturers' snowplow equipment. You know, so if we turn around and break a plow, I can't take the spare plow that I have and hook it on that truck. Or wing, it will not fit. The sander parts will not fit. The problem with Daigle and Holton, which is a lot more money, is gonna end up being more, there's no top on it, we have tap-to-top, that's fifteen hundred dollars. So that's gonna be adding on to the cost. The warning lights, the same thing. But, you know, so that's gonna be, that would be, you know, a few thousand dollars even more. So you'd probably be around a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for that truck. The only thing is, is in a storm, if you break something, we have other equipment. I don't have any of that equipment for the Peterbilt. So, you know, I would like the one at Daigle and Holton. But I know it's quite different the price. You know, I do know that, so. Something to think about. Yeah, but I do have, that's a hundred and eighty thousand in my budget for that one.
Correct.
I do have more than that money to cover.
See, some of these are two thousand and nineteen, they're not giving you any deals on them or anything, because there're gonna be leftovers.
Those are the deals.
Those are the deals.
I've got deals, I told them Tuesday night, once they're on, I'd be buying. So they all started scrambling.
And just so you know, I did look on our H G A C, the cooperative purchasing, for as close to as I could get. And these are cheaper than what we could buy through the leasing company, the H G A C, how we bought the truck, the fire truck. So, it's a ladder. So, well, I, you know, it's local and they have them built.
Yes.
And I should also point out, these purchases for the amounts that are higher than what he's purchasing for already went through budget committees and select boards for three years now, so. These purchases were already approved and you made it very clear during budget committee meetings that it needed to be done.
Just too educated to buy more of the F-five-fifties to do it. Could buy three of them for the price of one of them.
Yeah, it wouldn't work, they'll shut it down. You're getting ahead of people.
I know.
Let's talk about the six-wheeler, let's get that over there.
I say go with the one that's more expensive because if it breaks down, you're not gonna have anything to put on it.
Yep. And I feel the same way. I can't take the pushbowl off of something that we have or some spare stuff and put on the Peterbilt truck. Believe me, I like that Peterbilt truck, I mean, that's not a pretty truck.
Peterbilt, a truck.
Yeah, no surprise, you know, they're pretty. Pretty doesn't cut it, you know what I mean?
What's the horsepower on the Daigle?
He wanted the three.
Three thirty.
Three thirty versus three hundred on the?
Yeah.
And it's got the better frame.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to point out that John did have a mechanic go over the specifications.
What are we getting for trade-ins on, the ones we got?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We brought them into the ground after. Should've sold them two years ago.
So they're not giving you, they're not giving you anything for them? So you gotta auction them off, is that what you're gonna do?
No, I'm keeping spare trucks. Last winter we went, truck should broke down and the old spare trucks couldn't get inspected anymore, so it couldn't run now.
So you're using these as replacing your spares?
These, they have to.
I'm just curious, I just wonder.
Yeah, when you don't.
Rotating your spares.
Yeah, yeah. Years ago, we used to get big money for our trucks. Running them this way, you're running them in the ground.
Yeah, oh, I get it.
So John, the bottom line on the D and H is one sixty-six, nine oh nine fifty-eight plus?
Plus.
Fifteen hundred plus for the lights?
Yeah, it will be two thousand.
I believe.
Be two thousand, the top and.
Two thousand, oh, sorry.
Two thousand top and the lights.
Okay, so it's about one sixty-eight?
Yeah, yeah.
One sixty-nine?
Yeah.
If we approve one sixty-nine, would you be able to?
Yeah.
Is this the one?
That's the Wheeler.
Yeah, that's the Wheeler.
That's the Wheeler.
Okay, and so which one are we getting?
Well, we're getting that one.
This is the one we're getting?
That's the Wheeler.
Yeah.
And then the six is?
The six is gonna be Daigle and Holton. That's a Wheeler that too.
That's the Wheeler.
That's the Wheeler.
Where's the other one?
That's the Wheeler we're gonna get.
That one there?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the Wheeler we're getting.
This is the one we're getting?
That's the ten.
Right. This is the six, yeah. Not from Whited, that's the one with the cheaper frame, the slimmer frame.
Bob saw today. All our equipment, Fairfield. Everything I got, so. And believe me, otherwise than that, I would go cheap, especially you know me, Abden. All set with that one? All right, next one's a five-fifty, this ten and a half truck. Three fifty, the other one with plow and wing, with the sander and everything else. We've had problems with keeping the wheels tight on them. It's rotted out, frame broke.
What year is that?
It's two thousand and seven.
Yeah, so you get twelve years out of it.
Well, yeah, but we built the motor and I had to take some money out of capital to pay for that, so it put me dead behind on my capital.
And that had a smaller motor in it, right, so you were pushing that pretty hard?
Yes. So when I went to these dealers, I was waiting for the newer motor, six-seven. Because the six-twos, six-twos, everybody was having them and I had one of them rebuilt once and the other ones in my pickup.
I got a hundred and thirty-one thousand on my six-two, never touched. Ain't even changed the plugs.
A six-two?
In a six-two.
Six-two diesel I'm talking about, no plugs in the diesel.
No, that was a six-oh, six-ohs.
Six-oh.
The six-ohs.
Yeah.
Six-ohs before the six.
Yeah, so anyways, so I'm going five-fifty now, so it's a ten and a half truck. And this is just buying the truck. I have to talk to Howard Fairfield about the gearing, so this is just the truck. Now at Whited, it's everything I want, six-seven, it's five-fifty, snowplow prep, everything else. It's got the dump body on it. The reason that I like having a dump body is they're taken up Fairfield's. I've dealt with Fairfield so many years that when they put their dump body on, they like to keep them back. And on the little trucks, I like to keep bodies almost right up against the cab. So buying it this way, that's why I did the. So buying it this way, that's what I did the last time too, they have to work around it. If they put the body on, even if I squat, they're still gonna move it back, so. This one here is sixty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's the cabin chassis and the body. Okay, the body, the pump, the top, and the tow plate is nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. At Fairfield's, they're in around ten thousand, so they're not too far off on that, but we're still looking at probably another twenty-eight thousand or thirty-five thousand to finish outfitting that truck.
That's on top of your sixty-one nine?
Yes. Small trucks about half, big truck runs between seventy and eighty thousand output there.
And we should also point out that John did try to deal with our local car dealership too, Shop Local, but they didn't have the big trucks.
Yeah.
The Fords he wanted, not the Chevys.
Yeah. Chevy voids the warranty.
When you put a wing on them.
They put a wing on them.
So what?
They void the warranty when you put a wing on them.
Oh.
So.
Ford built tough.
Yeah, so also a Rundle. Rundle Ford, same thing, a one-ton, red. They command a pretty good price.
This is for the one-ton?
This is for the, this is for the, excuse me, for the five fifty.
Five fifty.
Ten and a half, yeah. They command at a pretty good price. Sixty-one, one twenty-three. You know, they both prices are fair. The thing is, the one at a Rundle Ford is a demo. So sorry to get miles on that, people used it, so.
They should knock the price down a little bit then.
Yeah.
How many miles?
It was under a thousand. But it's still a demo. So I would go, I would like to go Whited Ford, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
What's your next one?
Pickup.
Pick them up, Chuck?
Pick them up, Chuck. Okay.
I think red is a good color for a truck, don't you?
We used to have them red.
Yeah.
You can see them, maybe people will see you when you're plowing in the middle of an intersection and not run into you then. In case they miss the flashing lights.
All right, on three fifty pickup.
Sorry, two fifty?
Three fifty.
Yeah. We're talking forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Diesel, it's got the six-seven, there's still a lot of six-twos out there, I do not want them. And this was the six-seven automatic, six-speed transmission. It's got everything I want. There's only nine of these that are still around right now, and Whited has one now. Of course, a Rundle Ford, wouldn't talk to them. And they command at forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for theirs, but it's subject to availability. And that's because they're having a hard time finding one, so. That kinda bothers me. And then they also command that, another one, with an extended cab that they haven't built over there, for forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars.
It's already built?
No, they haven't it built, so you don't know when, you know, it's gonna be done, when it's gonna be done, November, December, you know.
What would the extended cab be useful for?
I don't know, I have one in my personal pickup.
I'm just saying, is it something you need, because?
No, really, I can see, you know, I back in enough things now. Extended, put it back for the while, it's gonna be worse, I, I. I can't see it.
You're right about the six-sevens.
Yeah.
That was another.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
Yeah. So I would like to go with Whited Ford on that, and it's an XL, it's not the best package they make. You know, we know we got money like that, but. But anyway, it's the XL.
I don't have it, I spent it.
Oh. It's the XL package for both of them, it's a plain-jane package. I'm not in the thrills, so. Yeah, and that one's silver.
Definitely get run into that.
Yeah, I get run into no matter what. And that's for forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five.
So those are your recommendations of what you want?
Yeah.
As the town manager, I support John's recommendations, and I just want to say that he's put a lot of time and effort into this. I was impressed with the fact that he actually went out and asked the opinion of a mechanic. I, I just, I think he's really done his due diligence, and, and it's, it was, like we said, we beat this horse to death during the budget process. It's not like we don't think you need them.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they don't look great, the ones you're replacing, John.
Well, it's not even the look as much as it is the amount of wear and tear and break down.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, it's a break.
We've got a lot more years out of them than should've been expected.
And I'm okay if we're gonna have red and green.
We're gonna get our little symbol right there, it's like Christmas, really.
Red and green, we're like, we're gonna be celebrating all year long.
So to summarize, if I'm right.
Yeah.
You've got the ten-wheeler
Yeah.
from Morrison, or a one eighty-four, two forty.
Yeah.
You've got a six-yarder from D and H.
Yeah.
For one sixty-nine.
He rounded up for you.
That includes the lights and the truck.
Okay, yeah, that's right, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
You've got the five fifty.
Yeah.
With a six-point-seven liter displacement. And you'd have to fit that out some, but the price we're looking at for the, it has a dump body
Yeah.
and a plow prep.
Yeah.
Is about ninety-one thousand, nine hundred dollars after you've kitted it out. As you said, you need about thirty thousand dollars to complete outfitting that truck.
I do, but I would like to do that separate. I don't wanna add.
You wanna come back to us for that?
I'd rather come back.
All right, then the number is sixty-one nine?
Sixty-one nine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you've got a pickup, the three fifty.
Yeah.
A six-point-seven liter displacement.
Yeah.
Diesel, forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah.
From?
Whited.
Whited.
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm gonna trust John, he knows trucks.
I do, I trust him. You cool, Abdo?
I'm fine.
All in favor?
Who was the second, please?
Jan.
If they were Chevys, he wouldn't be fine.
Thank you.
John, I have to tell you, you are, were the absolute most prepared public works director that I've ever had. Give a presentation to a select board on purchasing equipment.
I want a ride in every one.
The only thing he'd let me do is climb into one of me, he took me for a ride.
Well, I'm gonna tell you a funny story, because it deserves it, so Bobby was telling me one day that a former town manager decided that she wanted to get into a truck with him and go plowing. So he took her plowing on his route, which would happen to be down the backhoe road, and picked her up and took off and was plowing. And then she wanted to be brought back. And he's just like, well, I'm gonna finish plowing, so he took her for a couple of hours and finished plowing with her in the truck, because you don't get to just go plow a little bit when you go, Bobby, if you're gonna go plow, you're gonna go plow.
The whole thing.
So.
That makes sense.
He kept up, because he had to do the whole route.
He had to do the whole route.
He thought he was just gonna turn around.
She never asked again?
No. I will tell you, though, I have asked several times to plow, and John has said no, because I wouldn't know how to drive on hills.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Johnny. The John Dagle.
Fireworks ordinance, old business.
Want to put that off to the next meeting?
We can.
Because we've got Darrell.
Yeah. What's your, what's your thoughts, folks, do you want to put it up until second meeting August?
Motion to table.
Second.
Any further discussion, are you okay with that, Jan?
Yeah, oh, yeah, and Clint's not here.
And Paul was in the area, though, yeah.
I have more Paul.
Okay, all right, all in favor? It's tabled until the August twenty-seventh meeting.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, I guess we need a motion to convene an executive session, is there?
So moved.
Pursuant to MRSA four oh five six F, is that the one?
As Philbrook Fund trustees to discuss applications.
Okay.
You pass that down to Katie.
Is there, is there a second to Katie's motion?
Second.
All in favor? For an executive session.
Can I text?